I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Railroad Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item on the agendas, item number one is Public Comment. Anyone wishes to speak to the council, address the council?
Thank you.
Mary Nunn, we'll go into our closed session that'll have our city attorney.
Yes, Mayor Cabralis, we have four agendas, closed sessions, all of which relate to the Nusquali interchange property. In addition, however, we need to add a potential litigation item on the Government Code 5495-6.9C. This pertains to information received by... Monday, and there's immediate action on it. He needs some direction. You need to make the finding that arose after the posting of the agenda. Apparently, there is potentially a need for a decision prior to Thursday, and so that finding, we could add that item.
Findings.
I was waiting for it to close, you know.
I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Railroad Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. Before we start our meeting, we did have a closed session. I'll have the attorney report on that.
Mayor Cabralis, we did have a closed session. At this point, there is no reportable action with respect to the items discussed in closed session.
Thank you. We'll now have the invocation that'll be given by Minister Ricky Bullard from the Burning Bush Church. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our Victorville Police Chief, Cliff Reynolds.
Let's bow his. Father God, again, we give you thanks, first of all, for sparing our lives and giving us an opportunity to be here today to administer your business, Father God. We thank you, Father God, for blessing us in this great city, Father God, for being the example to others, other cities and other leaders. We're asking right now that you will bless this meeting, Father God, that it may go forth and do those things in which you have us to do, Father God, in decency and in order. We also ask that you will bless each member, Father God. Touch each one of them, Father God, not only them but their families, Father. Bless them, Father, in the work that they do, for it is not easy, Lord. We ask right now that you would touch their hearts and give them the decisions that they need to make, Father God. We ask right now that you would touch them, Father God, and open up the doors that this city may have all the abundance that it needs to make it in this world. Father, we love you today, and we thank you for all those that came out tonight, and let this be a blessed event, Father God, with you in mind. In this, we give you all the praise, in the matchless name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We now have some presentations. Welcome, and thank you for being here to help us give honor to those that we're going to make presentations to tonight. The first one is for our Military Banner Program. It goes to the family of Cory Steven Veneras, United States Marine Corps. We do have a... Of course, we're going to have the banner that'll be hung up on one of the light standards in the city in recognizing the service of your son. And I also have a certificate for you. The City, Victorville, salutes Cory Steven Veneras, and thank you for serving our country, signed by the mayor, and we appreciate the service that your son is doing for us, and I will allow you to say a few words on his behalf.
Sir, I'd like to thank you, the mayor, and the City Council for this program. It is wonderful. Several years ago, I had the great pleasure of meeting a little boy named Cory. Through the years, our lives grew distant, and then somehow brought us back, and I now have the honor of calling him son. Cory has grown into such a fine, brave man. He loves his wife Nikki and his entire family very much. I stand beside the City of Victorville and salute Cory. May God protect you, Cory, and bless all of our brave men and women, and bring them all home safe to their families.
Thank you very much. And please, if you have to transfer Cory for his service, not only to his country, but to our city. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Nikki Veneras, the wife of Cory Veneras. I am very thankful to the City of Victorville for honoring our troops through this program, and I'm thankful to Kim for making the arrangement so that my husband's name can be seen among those of our town's many other heroes. It seems that, except for rare occasions like this, the men and women of our armed forces serve thanklessly when, in truth, no amount of gratitude is enough for the sacrifices they are willing to make and do make for each other and for us. Almost two and a half years ago, on the day after our five-year anniversary, Cory left for basic training, and eight months later, we were married. From the beginning, neither of us were really prepared for the difficulties of military life, and before he enlisted, Cory never really romanticized the Marine Corps like the other poolies. But he wrote to me in a letter from boot camp that he joined because he wanted to be the man, the husband, that I deserved. It wasn't long after he became a Marine that we began to understand what it meant to serve one's country. In the years that followed, Cory has learned... Sorry. Cory has learned a new confidence, sense of camaraderie, and he's learned that the romanticized sense of honor that the recruiters and drill instructors had talked about was real. He began to contemplate issues on a daily basis that hardly cross most young men's minds. He's become mature. He's become proud, optimistic, brave. But really, all the blessings and challenges of these past years seem small compared to this deployment. I know for me, the struggle against loneliness is constant, and I can only continue to pray and to have faith in our love and in God, that hope is not foolish and that all will be well. I imagine, on his side, it's much the same, and I am perpetually and immensely grateful to the men and women who are deployed now for keeping my husband safe and my country free. Thank you to the mayor and to the City of Victorville for the opportunity to speak and for the banner and the recognition and the honor they're giving my husband tonight.
Very much. Let's not forget, it's the military, men and women who are serving our country are sacrificing themselves for our liberty and our freedom. But it's also the families that are left behind, and an example is what you just heard. Next, we have, this is a welcome home, and then a farewell. This is Raymond Contreras Zedeño, U.S. Army. We do have his banner. Of course, we're not going to present it to him because he's here on leave, as I understand, and he's going back. So I'll let him say a few words.
First of all, I have a lot of pride for the City of Victorville, and this program is amazing to me. I just want to thank the mayor, sir, thank you very much for this, and the City Council members. I can't really explain how much it means when I got... When I found out that I had this banner, you know, it's one thing to have the support of your family, but it's another when you can say that your hometown, where you came from, has a banner with your name on it on a main street. So I really appreciate that. I served in Afghanistan. I was with the 25th Infantry Division. We were providing intelligence support in order to take bad guys off the battlefield. And I'm home now, and I'm glad and very happy to be home. But never forget, and as I do think about every day, there are still many others who are still over there and going over there. And it's a lot easy to come back home and forget about that, but always remember that there is someone still out there. And I have a lot of pride, and I have a lot of love for all my fellow service members still out there, the Marine Corps, the Air Force, and the Navy, and even some Coast Guard guys that float around out there. I love them all, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Good luck. We are very proud of our service, men and women, and our veterans. Also, we... This city does not forget those who serve our country and our city. Thank you very much for your service. Next, we also have a presentation for our Bright Lights Program, and it's Betty Bray. And this is a certificate from the City of Victorville. It's Bright Light of the Month, Betty Bray, and I do have a... Let's see where is it? Right here. I do have a gift, not only a certificate, but we also have a gift bag, and it's a gift card to Olive Garden, romance package for One Night Stay at the Hilton, which we have one of those, complete with the rose petals, a bottle of Martinelli Sparkling Cider, and a City of Victorville insulated cooler bag for you. And again, our certificate recognizing your service, your volunteer service to the City of Victorville. Betty, thank you very much.
I want to thank the people from the Friends of the Library, Amy and Shirley, who nominated me for this. Libraries are my second love. My first love is family, and second love are books and libraries, which do so much for our community, do so much for our children. And we have a wonderful group of friends here that work very, very hard to keep the library going, and the library staff is absolutely wonderful because they are friendly, they are good to people when they come in and need help, and this is all very, very important to a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. And again, we have a city library, and it couldn't function without the volunteers. We don't have enough funding to fund full-time staff, and so therefore, the library has always had the Friends of the Library, and we appreciate your help and your commitment to serving not only the kids of our community, but the many adults that use the library services. So thank you very much. I also have a presentation for Jimmy Dottosian. Jimmy, there he is in the back. Burt Tech. Jimmy is a great friend of the city, not only the City of Victorville, but the many organizations within the city, nonprofits and so on. Burt Tech is always there, ready to help, sponsor events and so on. So the city presents this to Burt Tech Waste Industries, a title sponsor in recognition of the support of the starstruck spectacular City of Victorville, and this is for the Fourth of July, July the Fourth, 2010. Jimmy, thank you very much for your service and your company's commitment to the City of Victorville. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you very much for this. It's a wonderful opportunity for Victorville to sponsor Burt Tech Waste Industries to help support the community efforts of all of the organizations in town and to support the city. We're here. We love this community, and we're here to help where needed. Thank you very much, mayor and to the council.
Thank you, Jimmy, and thank Burt Tech. Thank you very much.
As you make your way back up here, I just thought I would note something. Come on. I was just... All the folks from the library here, and the Bright Lights Newsletter, maybe many of you in this audience don't get that. If you don't, you should see Yvonne Hester so you can. But was it the month of June or July, largest circulation in the entire county? And when you realize the resource that we have there, and I wish we could give you so much more because you need more over there, but in that facility and having the largest, largest circulation, it just amazes me. So thank you for everyone that's here and all that you do, because that library is a great resource for this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay for the whole meeting, Betty, to keep that bag.
Unless you want to. First item is the Public Comment, and that's for all the city agendas and all the authority agendas. It's item number one, Public Comment. It's a three-minute limit on speaking, and the first one I have is El Cachillo. El.
Yeah, I come by here tonight because I call code enforcement. There's a lot across the street from me that's full of weeds, and, you know, they can catch fire easy. They're right next to a mobile home, and everybody in my neighborhood keeps their homes nice and keeps their yards nice. This lot never gets cleaned. They said they have nothing to do with it. The fire department and the fire prevention does. So I went to the fire department. They said they have nothing to do with it, and they said fire prevention. I went to fire prevention, and all I had been getting is a big runaround. On the third fairway, there's enough weeds and stuff over there. If there's ever a fire, they'll probably burn down all the houses on Camelback Drive. That's how high the brush is over there. My neighbors complained about it several times about two or three years ago. Never got a phone call back, nothing. You guys are supposed to meet with the heads of these departments and make damn sure they're doing their jobs, because they're not. And if they're not doing their job, they shouldn't be getting paid. Now, I took a ride around my neighborhood for about five minutes the other day, and on Victoria, between two mobile homes, there's brush about five or six feet high that could very easily catch the... Either mobile home on either side, and they would probably catch more mobiles go up in about 20 minutes. And they're not doing their job. I found several places on Arrowhead and Deville where there's a lot of weed. Victoria is the one I already said. Well, I mean, what's going on? Code enforcement can't do their job. Fire prevention can't do their job. Why are they getting paid? No, you guys can't answer. I forget.
Well, the fire chief is here. I guarantee you that somebody will think...
They don't even bother to call. You know, they were supposed to call them fifteen times. They don't call. You want to answer my question?
They'll contact you, so you're through.
Now, one thing I'd like to say, Mike, you were bragging the other day about being here for 24 years. The airport's broke. The city's falling apart. The city's broke. Everything's screwed up in the city. You're damn well, you've been here for 24 years, and we can sure as hell tell. And you're still working with them people from Newport Beach, which you guys don't learn. The city has gone down ever since you've been working with them, and they're not here for your benefit. They're here for their benefit. They're here to make money for them, not for you. Learn.
Thank you. Felix Diaz.
I was actually here to ask you for permission to have the Veterans Day Parade on the 11th, and I understand that it's already been approved. So thank you very much. I want to thank you very much for allowing the American GI Forum, the California Cadet Corps, to have our 11th Annual Veterans Day Parade, this time right on the 11th of November. So that's my first item. Second item is, this is the fifth year that I've come before the council asking for or appealing that you rename this complex after Mr. Clyde Tatum. I'm still after it. I'm still pursuing that. Unless you want to wait until I take over and then name it after me, I don't know. But anyway, I would like you to reconsider that again. I know it hasn't been, it hasn't been anyone that's against it that I know of. I think everybody's for it. I'd like to see that happen, if at all possible, reconsider that. Again, I want to thank you very much. You're doing a good job, regardless of what some people say. Thank you.
Thank you, Felix. Gary Cantor.
Thank you. Members of the City Council, my name is Gary Cantor with the Victorville Pavilion, and if you would please, I'd like to just speak for a few moments about my project. Recently, and this, it gives me pain because I've always had a great relationship with Bill Webb, and I've always considered him a outstanding member of your staff, without compromise. But we're either talking past each other, or there's been a change in policies on how your debt fees will be underwritten and what qualifies either a work in progress or keeps a permit active. Last year, when this issue came up before this council, I thought I was coming here to be qualified as a work in progress. Bill has taken the position recently that it's not about a work in progress. It's about inspectable work, work that is inspected under a permit process. And then even more lately, it becomes more defined, like what kind of work, what kind of permitted work can be inspected, and what scope of work has to be done to be inspected. When I was here last year, I think we all knew we were in for slow sledding. We were in for a tough, tough couple winners here. And to see these definitions, in my opinion, change halfway through this time period, or who knows, that's going to be necessary for a rebound or recovery, just seems, I have to say candidly, seems unfair to me. Part of my approval of my project included millions of dollars of public improvements, and those public improvements are in place, but my project's not. Now, I won't dredge a boat dirt, but, you know, you've got a couple million square feet of retail that might have been developed in this town had you had a slightly different policy towards retail development. Now, I don't want to special plead retail development, but retail development is a profitable activity, and a lot of cities appreciate retail development. I think the debt fee increases in this collapsed market that I'll be faced with make it more difficult to get deals done. But most importantly, I just think it's not right. I don't think it's fair. After what I've done for public improvements in this town and after hanging tough, to have my debt fees go up four or fivefold when, maybe with a little bit of help at the right time, you might be looking at a completed project out there generating sales tax. So I would request that the City Council consider giving me a development agreement that would fix my debt fees, and if they'd like to, maybe negotiate some reasonable increases to those debt fees so it wouldn't be unjustifiable. And I would appreciate you considering that. I see I'm on yellow, so I don't want to go a lot longer. But, and I think if we had a development agreement, it might be fair, or if I could take offsets against my public improvement costs. In other words, if I could show you that I spent $2 million bucks on public improvements...
Five seconds left.
If I could show you I spent $2 million on public improvements, maybe we could offset that. Thank you very much.
Dorothy Miller.
Dorothy Miller, I had a little problem. Last time at the council meeting, we had to leave early. And you know, there was a comment from one of the council members that too bad we weren't here to hear what was said. Well, there's many reasons why, but I'm not going into that. I'm just going to flat say that council member needs to step up to the plate, go back and check into these things that is being said that is not done, and I'm going to pin it down to exactly how many green cards we have and how many families. I'm talking families, not three green cards for three different people. I mean, this is not right. You guys are coming up here and telling you these things, and I want to see it true. I'd like you to sit down, and I would like you to give me the information on exactly how many we have. Exactly. Not, not the, how many chickens haven't hatched yet, but how many actually do we have? And that is what we're looking for. The people of this city is getting taken from one end to the other end. The city is not like it should be, and you all know that. Our roads, everything, the base needs to go. SCLA needs to go to VITA, and we need to be taken care of in this city. And that is one thing I'm pushing for, and I'm going to keep pushing, and you know where I am. And you know how to get ahold of me, and I appreciate if you'd get ahold of me, making a statement like you made at the last meeting, because there was a reason for everything I do, and I don't have to answer to you for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment. Mr. Cotillo alluded to Newport Beach or the inland group, if you will. Everybody on this council has a spreadsheet of what the tax increment has been from the power plant, number one. It's been $37 million over the last seven years, and that's shared not only with the City of Victorville, but with the other communities and the school district and the water district. So the power plant alone, coming from those folks at inland, has been $37 million to date and counting, because every year it continues to incrementally move upwards. And just as an add-on, when we... And just as an add-on, when we get power plant number two, which will be in excess of $1 billion, that's in excess of $10 million a year of property tax increment going to all the various agencies. So, it's an incredible asset we had. It got SCLA off the ground, and I'm very proud of it, Daniel.
I don't have any more cards. That'll be the end of the public comment part. We'll now go into our agendas. The first one is the Library Board. We have a consent calendar. Go for approval.
Okay.
The next two are the Logistics Rail Authority, and also the Southern California Airport Authority, and those are chaired by Councilman Caldwell.
Mayor Cabralis, as to the rail authority, the only item is item three, the consent calendar.
Second.
As to the airport authority, item three, again, is a consent calendar. Item four is proposed resolution SCLA 10-003, which if adopted, would authorize the investment of monies in the local agency investment fund, otherwise known as L.A.
Move for approval.
Item five is a request to approve a loan agreement between the Victorville Regional Center One and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, under the EB5 program, in the amount of $1 million. And I note that a representative of our partner in that regional center is here. Mr. Pennett, you have a report, a status report? And if you could, address Ms. Miller's question about the status of the cards.
Yes, sir. I'll try to do the second. With respect to the $1 million that was for your approval, by way of summary, 24 investors have now placed $500,000 each with the Victorville Regional Center, totaling some $12 million. Five more investors are expected to place $500,000 each within the next two weeks. We fully expect that at the September 7th council meeting, to bring $3 million more dollars to the city, totaling $11.5 million. And at this rate, we do expect to reach the goal of 50 investors, or $25 million, in very short order. We're pleased with the progress to date. I think Ms. Shelley Lee and others have tried to keep you apprised of that. And I will, by way of interface with many of the investors, tell you that the feedback that we receive from the investors is they're very happy to be investing in the city of Victorville. They're comfortable that Victorville is a pro-growth, pro-business area, and they feel reassured investing their money there. With respect to Ms. Miller's questions on the green cards, it can be a confusing issue, and I completely understand if you don't get it just from, I guess, from newspaper articles. But the investor, and part of it comes from different terminologies. When we talk about an investor, perhaps a more accurate term would be investor family. So, when we say a green card has been issued, that means that someone has finished the entire USCIS process, and at the end of that process, they were given a green card. Well, when we say "they," in fact, we mean their family. So, the difference in one green card to three green cards just has to do with the size of the investor's family. And maybe in the future, we can use more specific terminology that'll help others, as well as Ms. Miller, not have such a hard time understanding. And I apologize, a part of that is just federal terminology, state terminology, that is just commonly used. But I understand her point completely. It's difficult to understand sometimes. Are there any other questions, sir?
I'm answered, Mr. Pennett.
I have a question. What happens if they go through the process, and for some reason, immigration, you know, refuses their green card? Do they start again, or...
Well, no, ma'am. That's a very good question. My understanding of the process is that the work that the regional center does up front ensures that that won't happen, that the screening process is so challenging, such a torturous path, if you will, just so that that one event does not happen. So, the short answer is, I don't know. Should that happen? But the probability of that happening is very, very small.
Questions or comments? Motion would be in order.
Move for approval.
Item six on the airport authority agenda is on there by mistake. It's actually a redevelopment agency item, and so we will not act on it under the airport authority's jurisdiction, but we will act on it shortly under the redevelopment agency. That would conclude the airport authority agenda.
We now have the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Agenda. We have a consent calendar. Go for approval.
Mayor Cabralis, on agenda item number four, I'll need to abstain, as mine firm provides the insurance to Merrill Johnson Engineering.
Councilmember Mick Acker, may I get a vote from you on item number three?
Sorry.
Item number four, is a request to award a contract to Merrill Johnson Engineering, and this is in the amount of $43,329. This is for a rehab for an apartment complex.
Approval.
Item number five, requested resolution number R-10-006. We have item number six, request to approve a second amendment to the owner participation agreement binding between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Verde Valley Associates. Next is the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. We don't have any revisions. We have a consent calendar.
And by the way, if you check our website, you'll notice that there's a list of committees that we all serve on as council members. We get one pay, our city council pay. This committee right here is not even listed on it, and we could pay ourselves for that. So, the list is like six committees that, that is 10% cities out there that are abusing the system do, and legally so. The state legislature will probably change those rules sometime over the next year here, probably. But nevertheless, those are the things, look at your local councils and what they're doing. We take a basic salary that's pretty much the same as general law cities, even though we're a charter city. Our salary statute is pretty much in line with the charter city one, I mean, with the general law city ones. So, take a look at our website and check that out.
Next is the Water District. We have a consent calendar.
Approval.
Item four, request to approve an annual purchase order, request for water meters in the amount of $1,188,300.
Approval.
Item number five and number six are requests to amend a service provider agreement, and I think Sean and Reggie would like to make a presentation before we vote for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just so that there is no confusion over the Woodard and Curran contract, I wanted to take a few minutes to remind you what the base contract was, and then individually, just very briefly, touch on each of the amendments to the contract to date. Woodard and Curran was engaged to provide the design services for a wastewater treatment plant. That was one portion of their contract, and that was initially on the mind of $1.6 million. Additional work to that same contract was some $2.2 million, which was the estimated cost of operating and maintaining the treatment plant once it went fully operational. So, we have two contracts, and one doesn't start until the other one ends, and we're not at that point yet. But in order to accommodate Dr. Pepper's needs, they got a jumpstart on us. Our contract called for an operational plant in June, but they got a very, very fast start with their construction operations. So, we tried back in January, February, to accommodate accepting some of their flows in some fashion. And that did cause extra costs to the city of Victorville, some of which is to be offset by Dr. Pepper. With that in place, I'll just touch on each of the amendments to try and explain why it's there, why it wasn't included in the original base contract of $1.6 million, and to then globally look at the $46 million overall budget for the wastewater treatment plant, and all of the supporting infrastructure. I'd assure you that we are still below that budget. The First Amendment was dealing with the backup generation, and the concept of generating its own electricity from the biogas, a byproduct of the wastewater treatment. At the time we entered into a contract with Woodard and Curran, we believed that that was going to be a Vemis task. As it turned out, the generators that Vemis had would not be supported by the manufacturer for that biogas use. So, we had to then engage Woodard and Curran in this amendment to do further design work that was not contemplated in their first contract. So, that's not giving them more money for doing the same work. This is actual additional out-of-scope work that we requested that they do beyond the contract, the original contract. Amendment number two was for sludge drying beds. That's not something that we had ever contemplated doing. The concept was that we would have a sludge agreement with VVWR, and we would just send the sludge literally down a pipe, down the hill, to VVWR. Our inability to get a sludge agreement, and we still don't have a permanent sludge agreement with VVWR, caused us then to have to design sludge ponds to go next to the wastewater treatment plant. That was about $100,000. Addendum number three, that relates to what I indicated earlier, that back in about February, we actually had to put effort and expense into accepting early Dr. Pepper flows prior to, you know, our contractual deadline with them of mid-June. The Fourth Amendment was, due to construction difficulties, the deadline for some of the contracts was extended, you know, causing the engineering support work that Woodard and Curran was originally required to provide in their contract up to January. This was an allowance for them to do that work beyond the January deadline, through no fault of theirs. It was contractors' construction difficulties that caused that extension. The SCADA, number five is the SCADA. That's the instrumentation and sensors, and all of the control systems which would alert an operator, either in the facility or remotely even. It's a very sophisticated, very important component of a treatment plant system. That was never included in Woodard and Curran's work. That was something that was looked at. Another contractor possibly would be doing that, but it was a line item in the budget. We did successfully negotiate that work to be done by Woodard and Curran. By that stage, they had designed the treatment plant itself. They were very familiar with the construction, and they were best suited then to then do the SCADA design and the supervision of the construction of that. That was $245,000. Addendum number six then kind of crosses over into the operational side of stuff. Once we had the aerobic side of the treatment plant ready to operate, there was expenses incurred in what we term the startup and first fill. And that is introducing the seed sludge, bringing flows from the bypass system, and taking it into the plant itself to go through the treatment process. That's something that is sort of crossing the line between, we're still in construction, we haven't started full operation, but it's something you have to go through. It's a transition from construction into full operation. Again, that was a line item. It was identified in the budget. We had never included that in the original Woodard and Curran contract. But again, they were to be the ultimate operator, and it just made sense that that would be the company that would do that work. Tonight before you is addendum number seven. And again, this is extending the engineering support through this extended construction period. And addendum number eight really is, again, it's getting into the operation and maintenance portion of the contract. By the way, that was a $2.2 million portion. And the $435,000, you could look at it this way, that is going to be coming out of the $2.2 million. There are the startup, to give you an example, the startup costs, there are many chemicals used in the treatment process. The first day that you operate that plant, you need to have tanks full of chemicals to be able to treat. Thereafter, all you're doing is replacing what you've used. So, there's upfront costs associated with your startup. And those are contained within the $435,000, and if you like, will be removed from the $2.2 million portion of the contract. At the end of the day, when we take a look at the to-date total contracting amount with Woodard and Curran, the typical design and construction support should be in the order of magnitude anywhere from 12% to 15% of the construction cost. With eight addendums to the contract, we're still at 9% of the construction cost. Staff feels very comfortable... Staff feels very comfortable that we are getting good service from this company, and we're still recommending these change orders to be approved. I think Reggie may have some more to add.
I just wanted to add, because every meeting seems like we're bringing you change orders and talking about just the wastewater treatment plant, but there's a lot more to the wastewater treatment plant than just the box on the one site. There's all the supporting infrastructure, the water, the miles of water main, miles of sewers, and also an electrical service that's going in. We also have a complete new reclaim system that we have put in in this two-year period that includes 24-inch piping from the wastewater treatment plant all the way to West Winds Golf Course, where we've constructed a 1-million-gallon elevated tank, which is first of its kind in California. It's a composite concrete pedestal with a steel tank on the top. The concrete pedestal will require no maintenance versus the traditional-style elevated tank that you see across the street at the federal prison. We only signed contracts with these folks, Wooderton-Curren, at the end of August 2008, so just right around two years ago, when I was talking about this project with a consultant that does work on our arsenic treatment plants and our well pumping plants from Corolo Engineers. It's a national engineering firm that specializes in water and wastewater treatment plants. He was very interested in this industrial wastewater plant, and he said, "When do you need it operational?" And I said, "Well, we're in a big bind because Dr. Pepper is going full bore here. They want it operational in two years." And he laughed at me two years ago, that, you know, isn't possible. A wastewater treatment plant typically is a four- to five-year process to get done. And I was talking to him last week about another project, and he was ribbing me, you know, "How's that treatment plant going?" And I said, "You want to come up and see it operate?" Because it is operational now in only two years. Now, that's a phenomenal pace that we got this plant operational. And when you consider, we saved probably about two years of construction and all the support, staff support and consultants that would be involved in that two-year period, we saved, you know, millions and millions of dollars doing it this fast. And with help from our neighbors, we have not slowed down Dr. Pepper. They never had to reduce their production to accommodate our facilities. We've always met their requirements from day one. So it's, we've done, even though we do bring a lot of change orders, the overall cost is under budget and on time to meet Dr. Pepper's needs, which was the main catalyst for doing this project. But we put in sufficient infrastructure to support many more industries as they come to town.
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead. Should have made this present, I got chewed on by my wife yesterday after reading the Daily Press. I needed this spreadsheet. She said, "What are you doing? All those amendments and everything?" I said, "Trust me, and we're making adjustments and changing. We're in budget and in schedule." And, "Well, what are you talking about? I read the Daily Press, and you're going bankrupt, and you're selling the sewer plant, and you're going over budget and everything else." And so this spreadsheet is very helpful. Matter of fact, I'd like to see that it's published in the Daily Press. I don't know if they ever will, but that spreadsheet is very explanatory for anybody that wants to sit down and look at it carefully and say, "We've done an awesome job here," as you've indicated. The revenue coming in two to three years early is just like having the power plant built, and with revenue coming in off of that, and the customer base now will begin to grow off of that. I have one question. How much bigger can we make it percentage-wise? Can we double the size, triple the size over the life of the?
Well, it's originally designed for 2.5 million gallons a day. The consultants, because of advances in technologies, they feel they can place additional cassette filters in the existing tankage that we've constructed to make the existing structure a 4-million-gallon-a-day plant. And then there's an operations center that's next to the tankage. We can build a twin to the tankage on the other side with the same 4-million capacity. So with a very minimal additional investment, we can make it an 8-million-gallon-a-day plant when that need comes. So it would probably be about a $15-million additional cost to take it up to 8 million gallons a day.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Presentation.
Good presentation. And I was out there, when was that? Last week we were out there, and that plant is operational. It's going. Okay, we have item number five.
Approval?
You notice I'm putting this in my pocket, I'm taking it home to my wife.
Item number six, for approval. Item number seven is the request to award service provider agreement to Equilogic in the amount of $35,276.
Approval?
Second.
Item eight, is a request to accept the notice of completion for the elevated water tank for reclaimed water. Item number nine is a request to adopt resolution number BWD-10-DR-11.
Move for approval.
Next is the city council agenda. Item number three is a public hearing. Public hearing called to hear arguments for or against adoption of resolution number 10-070. I will now open up the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishes to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. I will now close the public hearing on item number three.
I got a question to ask. Three and four are kind of interrelated, aren't they? Those same deals?
Their assessments.
Yeah. My, somebody there from, yeah. The zero, the zero-scaping, why can't we apply that towards these landscaping things instead of any kind of water? Can we change the design features on this ordinance or anything like that to cut down on that overhead?
These, these specific items, if, let me brief everybody, applies to the track that was west of 395, which is where houses were construction, and now they raised them about a year and a half ago.
Are they, is the landscaping in yet?
There's no landscaping.
No, I didn't think it was.
No, there's no landscaping on these, on these tracks.
But when, when they're ready to build, what are we going to tell them to do? Put bushes and water it?
They'll have to comply to the same requirements that we have now. The reason for this amendment or for this resolution is there were no tax rolls. They were not put on the current tax roll, so there were no taxes collected. The developer is not asking for a refund, nor is he eligible for one. This simply says he will not pay taxes until he pulls a permit to install the landscaping.
Now, Reggie, I know, I know that. What I'm saying is, when they're ready to go, what are the, what kind of bush are they going to put down there?
Well, they have to meet the L-MAD specs, just like every other development.
Okay, that's, I'm not familiar with that one. What?
Well, it's, it's the same specs that we use for every assessment district.
I'm coming to an important point here, so I'm not, I don't want to lose it here at the moment when we got a transition moment or a dead time under construction. Maybe this would be a good time to cut down on some of the peripheral landscaping that, you know, that we are having some maintenance issues with, and even the water issues. Maybe we can change that policy a little bit and adopt a slightly different zero-scaping type of, that's all.
Yeah, and that's a good point. We currently do have drought-tolerant requirements for that L-MAD, so our standards are already drought-tolerant, but we can increase them and, and make them, you know, 100% zero-scape. And that's something that we-
Oh, okay, you can do that.
Yeah, that we can work on, yes. And, and we can do that, we can do that in-house. But I just wanted to give credit, we are currently doing drought-tolerant L-MADS, but we can also, we can always do better, so we'll take note of that.
Okay, cool.
Okay, the public hearing is closing, item number three. For approval?
Second.
Item number four is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the adoption of the resolution number 10-071. I will now open up the public hearing on item number four. Anyone wishes to speak on item number four, for or against, please come to the podium. Anyone wishes to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on item number four for resolution number 10-071.
Second.
Item number five is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving amendment DEV-10-00006 as set forth in proposed ordinance number 2264. I will now open up the public hearing on item number five. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number five, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number five, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing on item number five. And read the, read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving amendment DEV-10-00006, various amendments of the Victorville Municipal Code to Title 12, Vehicles and Traffic, and Title 18, zoning City of Victorville.
Wait for the reading and move introduction of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
Item number six is the consent calendar.
Second.
Item number seven, request to adopt resolution number 10-072.
Move for approval, and then make a comment on it too, by the way. This here is an enterprise zone, and unfortunately, Hesperia had opted out, so effectively what they've done is said they're going to compete with the rest of the Victor Valley in terms of economic development. If you look through the list, you'll notice that Apple Valley, the county, and the city of Victorville are all partners in this, and Hesperia has chosen to do their own enterprise zone, which means that basically we're competitors. There was an option for all of us to be together on VITA, but they chose to go their own route on that one. And the rest of the board says, "Well, knock yourself out then, go ahead and do that." But my opinion of foolish move, but there you go. Anyway, the rest of us are in the same game on that one.
Item number eight, request to adopt resolution number 10-073, and this establishes the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2010, 2011.
Move for approval.
Second.
Item number nine, request to adopt resolution number 10-074. This is an application for a grant.
For approval?
Second.
Item number 10, request to adopt resolution number 10-075. Eleven, item number 11, request to approve amendment number two to the general service provider agreement with Astrum Utilities. This is in the amount of $102,000. Item number 12 is a request to renew another year of the annual solid waste disposal cost between the county and the city of Victorville. This is in the estimated in the amount of $2,250,000.
Approval?
Item 13, request to renew another year of solid waste refuse and recycling collection costs between the city, between Victorville disposal and the city of Victorville. This is in the amount of $7,750,000.
Approval?
Item 14, request from council to support the extension of the Regional Center of Victorville Development, RCVD advisory agreement.
Have a question on this, Mayor. In the body, and I don't know, but it says they want to have an extension to February 28, 2010. Pardon me?
Twenty-one should be.
No, it wrote, no, Keith. It said 2010.
It's six months, right, Keith? Six months extension, okay.
If they seem to have the total that they said they were going to have, 25, they need the extension all the way to February?
Right now, I'm recommending six months largely because I believe it currently to be an acceptable timeframe to, to establish that goal of raising the full $25 million. I do have a gut feeling of concern with respect to the exercise we're going through with USCIS, that unless we can get them and their issues not only answered satisfactorily and resolved, that the six months might not be enough. That's a gut feeling, but based upon what we know and what we're expecting in terms of a response from the USCIS, I do believe that the six months- of a response from the USCIS, I do believe that the six months should be adequate.
So we haven't resolved, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We haven't resolved the issue?
Not, not as of today.
Thank you.
The original agreement was for a year or the 25 million, whatever, whatever came first. Now, this will be the six months, we won't change that, it'll just add six months to the original agreement, but it'll still be, you know, the 25 million, once they reach the 25 million then, then it can be opened up to other, the other partnerships.
We're proposing no other changes to the existing advisory agreement, so to address your issue, the relationship with Victorville Regional Center LP is just with respect to the initial fundraising of 25 million.
Thank you. Just had to pull your chain.
I concur, it did say 2010 in there, but...
Thank you very much.
Since that date's already passed.
Your second?
Second.
Item 15, request for awarded contract to Vance Corporation in the amount of $1,409,853. Item 16 is a presentation of reports from council members. I'll start on my left, but...
Yes, Mayor, just real quick, that last item we approved, we're actually going to be doing some roadwork here in Victorville, and I'm very happy to see that. This was something that we were able to achieve through the 20-some-odd cities, five county supervisors, Sandbag all working together on stimulus funding that came out of, out of Washington DC, whether you agree with that or not. The funding did come, we put all that money down there, the entire board, 100% unanimous, put all that money down onto the 215 in San Bernardino. So what you see going on down there is in large part because we all agreed to put that money there. And in exchange, the money that would have come through to this city, Sandbag is, is passed through via other measure I funds, and so this 1.5 million or 1.4 million will go to doing some much-needed roadwork in our city, and I'm happy to see it finally moving forward. Sorry, Sean, I'm going to give you a little bit of a rib there, but we need this and we need it badly, so I'm glad to see this is finally moving forward.
Yes. No, I agree with Ryan, we need the roads bad now.
Okay, then, we're adjourned.